Item number four, the superintendent's report, Dr. Aubrey A. Johnson.
Yes, good evening. For the month of November, we have enrolled nine thousand six hundred and thirty-one students. There were eight cases in October for harassment, intimidation, and bullying. There were one hundred and twenty-two suspensions. Our staff attendance was at ninety-five point seven percent. Our student attendance was at ninety-one percent. Also, in the month of October, there were thirty-seven positive cases for employees and thirty-one positive cases for students. Most recently, the New Jersey School Public Relations Association awarded Brunswick Public Schools two school communication awards, recognizing our efforts in the area of marketing, branding, and in our social media approaches. The district comprehensive social media program utilizes a strategic focus reflective of the district's motto to prepare, empower, and inspire lifelong learners and leaders by providing information to more than eight thousand followers, which includes students, parents, teachers, faculty, community members, and global citizens. Our social media posts consist of information on school district events, motivational quotes, engaging questions, teaching and learning initiatives, and many of our city highlights. Also, shared during last month's meeting, Saturday, November nineteenth, New Brunswick will be hosting the Ed Camp New Jersey Unconference this year from eight o'clock to two-thirty PM. For those of you who are not sure what Ed Camp is, it's a really an approach for teacher improvement where the conference participants gather to decide what's going to be learned, then set out to teach each other to improve their pedagogical practices that in the end will partly impact students across the state. Registration is open to all educators, teachers, paraprofessionals, and administrators. There are attendees from New Jersey, from New York, Pennsylvania, and beyond that will all come together to learn. And Brunswick here, we are happy again to host and be central for all educators across the states that will love to come and teach each other. So I'm very proud of that. More information about this can be, is provided on our district website. In terms of instructional focus, I just want everybody to know, I had the pleasure today and yesterday to meet with all our district administrators and their teams and their vice principals. And the purpose was really to start to develop some type of action plans to provide each student with instructional supports during a dedicated time during the school day, which we call our WIN period. And WIN stands for What I Need. The overall goal is to ensure we are intentional and provide a focused instruction for all learners via research-based interventions for remediation in mathematics and English Language Arts, as well as enrichment based on student needs to improve learning outcomes. And we look forward to the implementation of this students-centered approach and will monitor the impact of the WIN period throughout the year. And I just want to thank the administrators today for enlightening me, some of your innovative approaches and practices and understanding the importance as a collective group on what we need to do. And it was very enlightening to hear that as you spoke to your staff members and your teachers, that they were just so ready and enthused to roll up their sleeves to provide the necessary supports to individual students. So I'm really happy to hear that and look forward to you refining your plan and really making a coherent effort to target individual needs of each students in our district. So kudos to you. Also, on Saturday, November nineteenth, to our continued partnership with the New Jersey Black Women Physical Association, we will host another vaccine and flu clinic at Retro School for first dose, second dose, and boosters that will be available to students, parents, and staff. Flu vaccines and lead screening will also be available. We want to thank all our community partners, our testing labs, and pharmacies who have partnered with the district in making testing and vaccination available to our staff and families. And lastly, a couple weeks, November twenty-fourth, we'll be celebrating Thanksgiving. And let's take this time to pause, to reflect, to reconnect, and express our gratitude for all that we have and for all that we should be thankful for. I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and that concludes my open remarks.
So much. Is there a motion accepted?
It's a motion.
We'll call, please.
Mr. Dornau.
Yes.
This is Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
This is Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mrs. Sedia.
Yes.
Dr. Boglum.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Now moving to item number five on the agenda, the student representative report. David Argon, David, hello.
Good evening. So the cross-country boys' and girls' teams both won the GMC Blue Division title. The boys' RCV team had a strong showing in the GMC tournament as well as a state tournament. The boys' JV soccer team won the JV County Championship with a win over the number-one-ranked team, North Plainfield. On November sixteenth, we will have our fall awards ceremony at five PM in the high school's auditorium. Our winter season will begin with tryouts on November twenty-first. Our senior convocation was held on November third, 2022, where students gathered at MBHS for dinner and a welcoming ceremony. Multiple student speakers, school administration, Dr. Johnson, and the school board vice principal, Ms. Sevilla, provided inspiration through advice and reflection while celebrating the beginning of the senior class's final year. On November ninth, 2022, the Hispanic Heritage Club and the school climate committee held our first annual cultural festival, where students, staff, and community members traveled around the world and enjoyed an interactive night filled with learning, performances, food, music, and raffles. A receiver marching band has also reached fifty students. Has reached fifty students. And as our season has come to an end this month, Tap into New Brunswick wrote a wonderful article celebrating this year's success. Our school's jazz band has now commenced and consists of two big bands from the high school alone. And this concludes my November student representative report.
Thank you, David. Thank you for that excellent report. Moving on to item number six, the facilities committee report, Mr. Andrew Spencer.
Yes, the facilities committee met on November ninth. We discussed the high school gymnasium addition. Specifically, we discussed the bidding and construction schedule timelines. A meeting is scheduled next week to review the final construction document drawings on November second. We received education approval from the Department of Education for this project. We will provide additional information once we finalize the construction schedule is established. We discussed some minor revisions to our current maintenance and repair policy. These modifications are in response to new changes in state and federal law related to school maintenance. The new Blanquita Volante Community School, we have received all required approvals from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs with the exception of the fire protection. The fire protection approval process requires that the actual contractor doing the work submit the drawings to the state. These drawings have been submitted to the state, and we now have, we have now received their comments. We expect to be submitting our response to the state by the end of this month. The final education approval was received from the Department of Education on August eighteenth, 2021. Friedman Works approval was August eleventh, 2021. Mortar main extension permit approval was August twentieth, 2021. Storm mortar management plan review conditional approval, August twentieth, 2021. The Delaware Raritan Canal Commission approval, September fifteenth, 2021. Full site soil erosion and sediment control plan approval was September twentieth, 2021. All pre-construction remedial actions have been completed. The underground tanks have been removed, the holes have been properly filled, and the job trailers have been delivered to the site. Temporary electrical utilities have been connected. Site demolition, clearing, and excavation of both detention basins have been completed. Grading and building padwork is complete. The final piece of build steel was placed on July twenty-first, 2022. Atlantic Engineering has continued to provide quality-controlled testing inspection service related to brick, mortar, and roofing work. They have also resumed steel and welding inspections related to the installation of the metal stairs. Window fabrication is on schedule. Roofing work is also on schedule. Construction on the exterior walls is slightly behind schedule. Additional crews are being added to ensure that the exterior brick work will be completed, and the building will be enclosed by the end of this year. We have paid seventeen point seven million dollars to date. An additional two point six million has been invoiced for the month of October for a total of twenty point three million dollars. We are anticipating additional three million of work to be built for the month of November. The overall project remains on schedule for completion in August, 2023. That, Mr. President, concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer, for that thorough report. Very exciting. Can't wait to see it come to fruition and see young people running around. Excellent. Moving on to item number seven, the athletic committee report, Ms. Patricia Varela.
Ivan Dick, report now. This fall season concluded with the boys' and girls' cross-country teams winning the Blue Division title for Middlesex County. Our boys' soccer team made it to the semifinals for the county tournament and the second round of the state tournament. The girls' volleyball and girls' soccer teams also qualified for the state tournament. Our boys' JV soccer team won the JV County Championship. So far, we have over one hundred sign-ups for winter sports, basketball, wrestling, indoor track, and bowling. We also have just under a hundred student athletes signed up at the middle school level. More sign-ups are coming every day as tryouts will begin on November twenty-first and through the twenty-second. The season will open December sixteenth with our girls' basketball team playing home against Plainfield High School. Athletics introduced online ticket sales for football and will continue to do so through Ticket Spicket. We offer, we will offer game tickets as well as season passes, and I will need a bone for the October athletic report.
Excellent. Do we, we have a, is there a motion to accept the official report? Second, we'll call, Mr. Spencer.
Mr. Dornau.
Yes.
This is Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mrs. Sedia.
Yes.
Dr. Boglum.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Ivan. Moving on to item number eight, the curriculum policy committee report, Mrs. Emra El Seawood.
Mr. President and members of the board, administration. The curriculum policy committees met last week, and we had one presentation from Melissa Horisi, Director of Early Childhood. She reviewed the annual operational plan for fiscal year 2023 to 2024. Now, we have this presentation every year, and we are required to present it. The plans include an update to the current preschool operational plan, a comprehensive description of critical components, including enrollment data and recruitment strategies, preschool intervention and referrals, inclusion of students with IEPs, supporting English language learners, curriculum implementation and student assessment data, family engagement, and professional development. We also reviewed the enrollment numbers, and it was a comprehensive report. I believe we included it, included approval for the board on the consent agenda, correct? Yes. Okay. So that report is included on the consent agenda because we are required to submit it to the state. One announcement for district news. National Steam Day, which is science, technology, engineering, art, and math, November eighth, was held November eighth. The National Steam Day newsletter was distributed district-wide and included articles and resources to share with students and their families. The newsletter also incorporated activities to utilize professional development opportunities for staff to learn more about the topics. And I believe that can be found on the website. We reviewed all resolutions and recommend approval. They too are included in the consent agenda. Policies and regulations. We have one new policy, which is thirty-two seventy. Lesson plans and plan books has been written to incorporate updates and make them applicable to school districts. This regulation is recommended for adoption to assist school districts in developing procedures for teaching staff members lesson plans and plan books. So this is a new policy mandated by the state. The other two policies and regulations we reviewed are revisions of existing policies and regulations. Number thirty-two seventy, professional responsibilities, has been revised to require the principal or designated to review lesson plans, assign extra or alternative duties for teaching staff members, and excuse teaching staff members from facility meetings. And this is a revision of an existing policy. The other revision is for maintenance and repair. Number seventy-four ten, and the coordinating regulation. This is, this covers facility maintenance, repair scheduling, and accounting. And this has been revised to reflect the State Board of Education relocating administrative codes. And these policies and procedures are included on the consent agenda, as they are all mandatory. And this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Seawood, for another thorough report. We'll move on to item number nine, the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey. Two things to report. One, as some of you know, the program typically is for students that are special needs, dealing with emotional and physical challenges. And typically, at twenty-one, they graduate from the program. And that's often a challenge because they've been working, they've been in the program from three to twenty-one, and so the parents, it's a great day because they graduate, but a challenging day. The parents say, how are we going to get support? So one of the things that we did at the commission is actually expand the twenty-one and over program. And one of the challenges at the state is that the funding is not sufficient to really maintain a twenty-one and over program. So we've done some fundraising, but I want to thank the Middlesex County Commissioners for donating a significant sum of money that will allow the program to continue to not lose money and grow and hopefully expand more, more young folks, as I often say. You know, as a society, we're judged by how we treat the most vulnerable. The people at the Educational Services Commission are the most vulnerable people in society. So that's, that's an exciting thing. The other exciting thing is Mark Finkelstein, who used to be president of this board for, I think, ten years. He's been the executive director of the Educational Services Commission for a number of years. He will be continuing there, but he was just elected yesterday to be president of Middlesex College. And so, you know, say, well, what relevance does that have to us? Well, one, Mark is part of the family, he lives in New Brunswick. But, but as president of the board of Middlesex College, he will be able to help us enhance our programs. We know Mark McCormick, the, well, he's chair, Mark's chair of the board, who's president of the college, but having two allies can really help us make this connection even deeper. Chair, he's chair of the board, Mark's chair of the board, Mark McCormick is president of the university. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so, the, so it's an exciting opportunity for us, I think. The other thing is they've invested some money into Middlesex College. It's going to be, they're talking about baseball stadiums and other things. It's going to be an amazing facility, so very, very exciting. So with that, we'll move to item number ten, the public comments. Rich, who's, who's signed up according to our policies?
The first person is Johanna Hernandez.
Johanna Hernandez, if you would come up, please. We'll welcome you on. Good evening. If you'd state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Johanna Hernandez. My name is Yana. My address is two oh one Couch Street, New Brunswick. I work for the board at the middle school. I'm a homeowner, and my husband and I had a business in New Brunswick for forty-five years. There are some things that I would like to bring up. I believe I have three minutes on the clock. Okay, thank you. I feel like I'm beating a dead horse, but the idea of central registration needs to be addressed aggressively in this district. Dr. Johnson, you and I, another colleague of mine, we had a conversation regarding this over a year ago. Staff members are confused, and the population of New Brunswick is confused. It's hard to educate them and direct them when they get different messages. But my one bone to pick with this process is validating students that actually live in New Brunswick. I have encountered over the years, because I am involved in the registration process, people that do not, and I know do not live there. And I just had this experience three weeks ago, when someone registered their two children at the middle school using my address. Now, that's have to stop. The money that I pay as a taxpayer, I want to utilize it for the students here in New Brunswick. We have wonderful students, but I want to utilize it for our students. I do not want to pay for other people. And I'm not quite angry, I'm going to be honest with you, during the day, it was reported. Those students still remain in our school. I know five students now that are in the middle school, and I'm sure it goes on within the district. And that is a component of our registration process that I know needs to be aggressively changed because it's a taxpayer, and I do not want to pay for children that live outside of the district. Second of all, I'd like to know Resolution U. What is this money, thirty thousand dollars, going to pay for, between Robert Wood Johnson and Eric B. Chandler? Does this provide something directly to our students?
Rich? Rich, would you address that?
Yes, Eric B. Chandler provides physicals for our students.
Does this include sports physicals or just the physicals to our students?
Both.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yes. Yes, the question is, who did you report it to? And if you don't want to say it publicly, if you could send in writing to the superintendent.
To the superintendent?
Yeah, if you could.
Okay. And at some point too, I'd like the board to review it. I think we do need a, we do need a centralized registration. It's taxing the people in the school that were already busy and overwhelmed.
So one of the things we, which is very important from an operational standpoint is that, have you reported it to the principal first? And that's critical.
But Dr. Boglum, this is not the only instance. This is just the most recent instance.
What is that? One of the things we're just asking is that people put things in writing, kind of go through the chain, you can copy the superintendent on that. Because the board can't, if it's not in writing, it's hard for the board to be supportive of the issues. It's great to hear things, but if you could.
I agree with you, but it seems that we need to have a policy and procedure that really negates this from even occurring. Yes, things are always going to slip through, but we're talking thousands of dollars to educate a child.
Well, thank you very much. Rich?
Even though it's a little late, Mr. Crowe is probably.
So, so, Mr. Crowe, we just have to do this. The, you always are beating us up if we violate policy, so I'm going to ask you, is it okay if we violate policy in this instance?
I appreciate your discretion. If you'll allow me to have my three minutes, I'll point out.
I have the authority to violate policy on your behalf.
Well, there's no reason to have any kind of advanced registration requirement. As you know, you haven't put anything like that on the record.
It was policy.
Right, you made the policy, and I don't think you've defended it appropriately or explained why you've made it harder for people to speak at these meetings, but nevertheless, I appreciate your discretion. Did want to ask first about the Middlesex County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund, a horribly mismanaged insurance, you know, enterprise that the board is involved in. I wanted to ask, you know, what is the status of the Board of Education's involvement in that fund? Are you switching funds? Do you have any comment on the situation there?
Would you comment, Rich, what others is?
We have moved from the Middlesex County JIP to New Jersey Schools Insurance Group as of July first, 2023.
As of July first, thank you, okay. And, you know, I did ask a few questions at the last meeting. You were, you know, you offered me the chance to ask the questions at the top in the hopes that you'd get some answers, but I didn't really get an answer, so I'll ask again. Why are you rolling back the lead testing requirements? Have you ever done annual testing and not found results that were unacceptable? In light of that, why not continue the annual testing out of the middle?
Right, did you want to say something, Rich?
Yeah, I mean, I certainly answered. We, the policy is always stated and followed what the state law requires, yet we've always tested every year, and we plan to continue to test every year.
So you changed the policy that we're going to go above and beyond your policy?
Correct. We didn't change the policy. There was things changing the policy, but our policies always mirror what the state law requires.
I understand.
We have gone for the past, how many years, right? Above and beyond the policy and.
And if you read the policy, Charlie, it actually says in there, a district can go above and beyond that every year, and that is still our intent.
Got it, so you're committing to do that. Thank you for that commitment. What is the status of the students who missed out on the swimming lessons at the Wellness Center during the pandemic? There were a couple of years when the students did not get that. There were a couple of years when the students did not get that.
Mr. Crowderville, we have heard you a few months ago when this is a concern. My team and I have been talking about that. At this, at this moment, there is no status, there is no update in regards to our initial response. However, we're, we're looking at the feasibility of during the summer, if we can come up with an agreement with those students who may have missed the opportunity to provide swimming lessons during the summer at the location. So we are looking at that. I can't tell you whether or not we'll be able to fulfill that, but you did bring that to the table. We have looked at it, thought about it, and we are, we are trying to see how we can make that happen. So hopefully within the next month or two, I could provide you some more feedback on that.
Thank you. I appreciate you looking into it. My final question is, what's the plan for the warehouse school? Obviously, it seems like the Volante School will open next year. What is the plan for the rest of that building?
First of all, you don't have a warehouse school, and in fact, they represent that you even call that. I mean, that is, it's actually a beautiful school if you tour it inside. And it's certainly anything but a warehouse. So I don't know if you want to.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so submit that in writing, your time's up, Charlie, submit that in writing and, you know, we'll, we'll get back to you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you very much. Rich, anybody else sign up? Okay. We'll move to item 11, my report. Just a couple of things. One, when students are in our schools who we discover are not from the district, there is actually a tuition transfer. So as a taxpayer, we actually get paid for that, you know, when that's identified and when that's, that is truly verified. So, you know, so not every, every child that's here, that's not supposed to here, is a financial drain on the, on the system, so it's important to understand that. The, the second thing that I will say is that in this election, and this applies to both Democrats and Republicans, that one of the, the big winner of this, this national election was decency. You know, was the, the, the fact that, you know, there's some, there's some Democrats and Republicans who were just very rude and very nasty, and, and they lost. And so I think as a society, as a community, and certainly here in New Brunswick, it's important, it's important to disagree because we grow when we, when we're challenged and we disagree, but we can't be disagreeable. And so I, I think, and I encourage all of us to, to do the best we can. I think most of us do do that. But it was a very clear message from the American people that, that let's focus on what's positive, let's focus on what's good, let's focus on what's right, and together we will try to deal with problems. And so their problems, there will always be problems here in New Brunswick, around the world. You know, we're hearing about some horrible things that happened in Poland. So, but as a, a community, we're all in it together. We are all in it together. And I'm hoping that, you know, we'll see that this country will come back together again. Democrats and Republicans and independents and conservatives and liberals and, and folks will put, put this country, will put New Brunswick and put New Brunswick schools first. So, so that's my, my report. Moving on to consent agenda, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? Is there a second? Roll call, Ms. General.
Mr. Dornau. Yes. Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Wonderful, thank you very much. We are moving on to number 13, Finance Committee Report. This is Diana Solis, Chairperson.
Thank you, Dr. Caldwell. All members of the Board have had a chance to review the finance report as presented, and I'd like a motion to approve.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? Roll call, Ms. General.
Mr. Dornau.
Yes, I'm standing on page six.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving on to item number four, the resolution for closed session.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Dr. Caldwell, if I, if I may. On, on behalf of myself and the entire Board, I just wanted to take a moment to express my gratitude to every single person in this district who works daily diligently to ensure the safety of all of our children and their well-being in mind, body, and spirit. And this, and this really extends from the moment that our, our over nine thousand six hundred students walk through the doors and they're greeted ever so politely by security. They are reminded every day by security faces that they are safe, they are here because they are welcomed, they are here to learn and they are protected. There are so many safety guidelines that we have in place to ensure that our district remains the safe place that it is. To the cafeteria staff that ensures that our children are getting their meals prepared adequately so that they can have a nourish, a nourishing meal. I'm personally experiencing something with a family that's new to our district, and I just cannot emphasize enough how great the resources are that we have in our, in our district and how we can sometimes underestimate what a smile can do. And we can sometimes be so immersed in our own lives that we take so many things for granted. But with, with what I'm currently experiencing, I just want to emphasize, especially during this month, how grateful I am, and I know that all of us are, for every single person in our district that does their job so efficiently to ensure that the mission is accomplished on a daily basis. So on behalf of all of us, thank you for all that you do, and I wish you a very happy Thanksgiving with your loved ones. Thank you, Dr. Caldwell.
That's an important message given the horrible shootings that are going on everywhere from University of Virginia to other school districts. So thank you so much for that. I'll read the resolution for closed session. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10 colon four to six, provides that certain matters of a public body may be discussed in closed session. And whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, personnel matters, matters of attorney-client privilege, now therefore be it resolved, the aforementioned subjects will be discussed in closed session by the Board of Education and administrative staff. In the minutes of said closed session, discussion will be made available to the public when the reasons for the non-disclosure, in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, no longer exist. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Roll call.
Mr. Dornau. Yes. Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
We are in closed session. We wish you all a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday with family and friends.